Do the salute to the flag. Glad you're agents, to the flag of the United States, America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Comfortable, Mary? Roll call.
Mr. Houghey?
Here.
Mayor Leahy?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Clark?
Here.
Mr. DuCotto?
Here.
Mr. Dillon?
Here.
Sixth president, one absent.
Thank you. Special order of business, communication by remote participation. Members of the viewing public may view the meeting via LTC and those wishing to speak regarding our specific agenda item shall register to speak in advance of the meeting by sending an email to the superintendent indicating the agenda item and a phone number to call so you may be conference then. New business, FY21 budget session. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a long time coming within the difficult and turbulent year that we have, that we are coming out of and the difficult and turbulent year that we're going into. It's nice to have one decision point hit some level of stability. However, I believe the concern should be shared that within-year cuts is something the legislature could require, could necessitate depending on how we go forward. We're prepared for that, we're ready for that, but tonight we're pleased to share with you a balanced budget for FY21. This would be require of you an approval of a 9/12. We've already done one, three 1/12 budgets, this would be a 9/12. The guidance and direction I received from the school committee on the prior meeting is that we have a different way to go forward. We're prepared to share with you the overarching budget with a recommendation on a 9/12 approval, but will defer to the committee as to how you want us to proceed through this hearing. The first place I want to start is just as a reminder about our strategic plan. Our strategic plan guides every decision that we make. If you recall, we adapted the strategic plan from a five-year plan to a one-plus-four-year plan. Within our goals, which we will continue to share out within the next committee meeting, we'll have a conversation about our key performance indicators, but it's important to also recognize our priority areas within COVID planning. Those priority areas include physical health, mental wellness, fiscal prudence, and maintaining flexibility. This budget reflects all of those priorities, moves us towards achieving our goals within our strategic plan, and what is, I believe, extremely important, that last, those last two on the bottom line as we talk about budgeting around the fiscal prudence and maintaining flexibility. And you'll see that throughout this conversation tonight. Ms. Turner will share with you the budget highlighting specifically any adjustments which include recommendations to the committee for restoring some of those centralized positions based on challenges we've, we've seen and we've experienced to hear committee guidance on those positions. Ms. Turner, if you could, take the committee through the presentation of where we stand in terms of a balanced budget going into FY21. Ms. Turner?
So, I believe you have to declare it a public hearing, so are we doing the presentation first and then we'll declare the public hearing to go through the, the rest of the document?
I would think so. Let me refer to Mary. Mary, does that sound good? Sure, we'll do that, we'll do the present. Why don't we just do the presentation?
Do the presentation and then do, open up the public hearing.
No speakers yet. Is that what your question was? There's no public speakers though, calling up. Right, right, okay. Thank you, Ms. Turner.
So, the budget presentation that you have in front of you is summarizing all that we have discussed thus far on revenue and on expenses. I tried to do an overview being that there's $200 million in detail, so the first slide, the first slide after the strategic plan slide, I can't move, I want to move, is showing the general fund revenue. As you know, general fund includes chapter 70 and city cash. So, chapter 70 went from 163 million to 166 million. That was a $3.9 million increase, but the city cash decreased from 16.3 to 15.7 million. That was a reduction of 623,000. That's a net increase of $3.3 million in our general fund. The next slide is a summary of what would have happened had we been level funded. The FY20 budget was $179 million. Necessary additions were COVID expenses of $7.3 million, contractual increases of $5.4 million, fair student funding school increases of $2 million, and miscellaneous increases of $1 million, which includes things like the copier leases and those type of costs. That would have been $15.8 million in increases, which would require our budget to be $195 million. The shortfall would have been $15.8 million had we been level funded. But luckily, we got the FY21 revenue increase of the 3.3 million. We got COVID grants of 4.9 million. That additional revenue totals 8.2 million. That left a shortfall after the additional revenue of 7.5 million. The budget balance and strategies that we took to close that $7.5 million deficit was we did the pre-purchases of supplies, technology, supplies and textbooks, central office reductions of over $900,000. The added district tuition, we increased the offset to $1.3 million. And the health insurance was funded through ESER, which is $4 million. So, that remaining deficit is zero. The details of additions, the COVID expenses included, this is just again summary of all that we've discussed thus far, the COVID expenses include remote learning technology, learning management system, additional teachers, additional support staff and differentials, PPE, and other unexpected costs, like we could talk Plexiglas, for instance. Contractual increases includes only the step increases, it does not include raises. The fair student funding school increases includes staff such as assistant principal, instructional specialist, over 20 teachers including the ELL required teachers, paras, tutors, career counselors, student service specialist for the freshman academy, parent liaisons, and school allocation increases. The miscellaneous increase includes changes to the copiers, leases, salary adjustments when someone's hired less than budgeted, or transportation, et cetera. It's just a net of all the different ins and outs. The details of reductions, due to the savings in the FY20 budget, we were able to reduce the FY21 budgeted expenses by pre-purchasing technology, supplies, text and school allocation supplies. Despite the additional revenue, we still faced the deficit. We reduced central office functions by approximately $1 million. These positions include strategic planner, clerks, director of secondary ed, part-time early learning coordinator, collective bargaining council, data coordinator, evaluation team chairperson, and bilingual liaisons. The ETC duties are being combined with the assistant special ed director's duties, and the bilingual liaisons were maintained but now covered by a grant, so it still looks as if it's a reduction on the general fund, but it just moved to the next column. Another method of closing the deficit was by reducing the added district budget on the general fund by moving the cost to the revolving account side. Since we replenished the revolving accounts using FY20 savings, this is a reasonable risk. One question that was just asked at the previous meeting is being that this got us into trouble before our revolving accounts were depleted, why would we take a similar risk now? And the reason being, we replenished that account to the maximum. We're only allowed to maintain in that account what we get in a year for reimbursement, so we have $4 million in there. If we get another $3.5 million in reimbursements, we're going to have 7.5 million in there, which is exceeding the maximum we're allowed to have. So, we have two risks. We don't want to deplete our revolving accounts, but we also don't want to overfund the revolving funds and get cited for it. Another example is food service. We're only allowed to maintain a balance in there of three months of operating cost. So, when we're doing good and we replenish these accounts, we always have to worry that we don't go too far and get too rich. Health insurance increased, but is listed in the reduction field simply because the ESER grant is covering 4.7 million of it.
So, the ESER was a COVID-specific grant, correct? A federal?
It was unrestricted, though. So, whereas the other COVID grants, one COVID grant, the CVRF, school reopening grant, specified that it could not have been in your budget prior to the COVID costs, specifically for COVID-related costs. The state tech grant is for COVID technology. The ESER grant was, we could treat it as general fund dollars.
Great. And is that the same grant that was used to fund the bilingual liaisons?
No, the bilingual liaisons are going to be covered by the title grants.
Which one?
The, one of the title, I'm not sure which one, which, they're right in the grant, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Just one quick question from up here. When you talk about the food account, did we pay that deficit off of $2 million or whatever it was?
We've been, we've been paying it off. As a matter of fact, we're pretty close to it. It was supposed to take us four years so that it wouldn't be detrimental to the students. We, we talked to the Department of Ed and, you know, we convinced them to do 500,000 per year, because if we would have paid the full amount back that year, it would have been an additional $2 million in cuts last year when we already had that deficit. So, we're, we're pretty, like I'm to the point where now I have to stop watching to make sure we don't go over the three months of operating expenses. So, we're pretty, like I can't say 100%, but we might be a couple of hundred thousand dollars shy of it, of paying it back. So, we're really good, like we didn't even have to charge off on it this year.
All right, so, we, how many years has it been since we started doing that?
Only two.
And we had?
And we were given four years, and so the...
Oh, we're given four years, yeah.
Right, and we're not going to need the full four years because we're doing, we're...
Okay, so we're pretty close to paying that off?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, the next slide is a summary of all funding sources. The first slide that I shared with you was a general fund summary with the chapter 70 and city cash. This one is summarizing because I'm always throwing numbers out at you. It's showing you where the increases and decreases were with the title grants, the big sped IDEA grant, the COVID grants, there's the COVID ESER that I referred to, the COVID CVRF, the COVID technology. Then it shows our state funding, which is the circuit breaker that I'm referring to, and as you can see, it's 3.8 million, that's what we're expecting. So, if we already have a full circuit breaker account and we're expecting 3.8 million, we could be over, you know, like, over full. Chapter 70 is listed there, then you have the local dollars down below. And I just wanted to point out that city cash was reduced by 623,000, but it was actually a 1.2 million dollar reduction for us, because when we originally got their numbers, they had increased us by 600,000. So, when they did the decrease, it was a net decrease of 1.2 million to us. And one thing to point, point out on this sheet here is, if you can see all the federal dollars, other than the ESER grant that's listed in there, all of those costs under federal are all restricted for specific purposes, so we can't just add it to the general fund. The next slide I've shared with you previously, and it's just a reminder of why I feel it's okay to use the circuit breaker offset. This, this slide shows you that we had projected to go up to 2.3% of our total budget with revolving account balances, but we actually went to 4.5%. So, our goal, we fast surpassed our goal, so I just want to remind you of that.
It's also important to point out, if you recall, back in last spring, replenishing these revolving accounts beyond their projection was part of our strategy to make sure we were prepared for this budget year. So, having those dollars available beyond your projection was a strategy that the school committee recommended in order to be prepared for the uncertainties of this year, and you now have that at your disposal, which is then included within our recommendation.
So, the summary, an assessment, patient team chairperson whose duties were combined with the assistant sped director, academic coaches, we had put that on the list originally, there were three, but we're recommending to restore one of the three. Strategic advisor, .5, and .5 labor attorney, recommended to restore. We want to restore one of the academic coaches, and that would be on a grant, so it won't affect the general fund balance. The facility area manager, which would be on the general fund, and two clerks. We are recommending to add back the executive secretaries for curriculum and instruction and the equity office.
Thank you very much. So, looking at the recommended to restore, the, the two clerks that you're citing here, am I correct that those would be the same clerks that were cited on page six as being part of the central office reduction?
Yeah, that's why we're...
So, we reduced them on page six and brought them back on page eight?
That's the recommendation to restore. So, there's two things here that should be known. One is, we were looking for continued guidance. Early in the budgeting process, the committee voted to create a suspense account. Our recommendation here is that we restore these positions. If the committee would like to maintain the suspense account, these positions would not be restored. They are built within the budget. The idea here, the concept or the approach, is based on what we've been experiencing through the challenges of COVID-19. There are a number, an inordinate number of requests for answers, information from central office, where the lag time on just being able to respond to phone calls is beyond what the current staffing is able to keep up with. It's not an acceptable lag time. I spoke with a representative from Enterprise Bank, they said they experienced a similar lag time when they did the PPP loans. They had to institute a new phone system. They're in contact with Ms. Phillips about whether a new phone system would be appropriate. Here, reducing two clerks on top of the challenge that we have, we don't believe to be advisable any longer. Those two positions would be restored for that purpose. They're in two offices that get an inordinate amount of calls, the academic office, Ms. Desmond's, as well as Ms. Phillips, which works within our community engagement. The other position, the facilities area manager, I think for the many conversations we've had about our facilities, I think for obvious reasons, the recommendation is to restore that position. All three of those positions are currently vacant, so they're all three vacant. They would be hired, hired back in and posted following approval tonight. We'll bring back the permission to post on next week's, next week's agenda. That's why they're listed, Ms. Martin, as recommendations, because we need to hear the guidance from the committee within the budget, but they are included within the budget as well, within the bottom line. Ms. Turner, is that accurate?
Yes.
All right.
So, as we go through the actual budget, what page does that appear on, those two additions?
On the actual budget, it's on page three of the actual budget. And it's highlighted, and it shows 17.
And this is one of those ones that we shifted, right? Because it was 25 last year, and now 17.
There were, yeah, 29 total, between the 25 on the local grant and four on the grant, and now there's 29 is when we restored it. So, 29 and 29.
Okay, so as I'm looking at the FY21, that highlighted portion, so that's showing 17, and then three on, on offsets. So, that's 20.
Right, I'm sorry. Just to make it clear, last year, we just had a clerical staff central administration. To make it clearer, what, on departmental spending, I broke it into two lines and did clerical staff...
Okay, that was my question.
Yes, special ed clerks.
So, that's on page three of the budget budget, of the actual budget?
Oh, you're looking at the wrong, you're looking at...
It's line 1,400?
You're looking at staff salaries, that's not a budget.
Not the one she gave us tonight, the one from, that's part of this package. I'm sorry. That's my question.
Okay. So, the last slide is a recommendation. You voted on the following, July 1/12 budget, 14.9 million, August 1/12 budget, 14.9, and September 1/12, 14.9. Now, we have to vote for a 9/12 budget as follows. October's 9/12 budget would equal 137 million. The bottom line total that the city council voted on was 182,690,537. So, we need to vote on that. And after this presentation, the budget document is included. I tried to highlight things and point them out with the letters on that column so that you would be able to find the central office reduction, and, you know, you'd be able to find where we did the pre-purchases, because as the city councillor Elliot was referring to, when we, when we reduce our health insurance, when we reduce all the pre-purchased accounts, we have to replenish all those. So, when, when we start in next year, we might reduce the 7.3 million that we have in COVID costs, hopefully. Hopefully, it will be done and we don't have those any longer, but we are going to have to replenish the accounts that we reduced this year. So, do you want to ask questions, or do you want me to go over anything from the budget?
Let's see if anyone has questions on the presentation? No, okay. So, do you have a question on the presentation? Okay, not going into the budget on the presentation, though. We're going to go into the budget after, so what, do you have any questions?
Oh, okay, no, I'll wait then, I'll wait then.
So, a quick question from the chair is, with the, whatever page summary of staff changes is, we've got evaluation team chair duties combined with the assistant sped director. So, how many assistant sped directors do we have now? And what is the evaluation, they're going to be able to handle that?
Yes, that, oh, so I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Sure, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you recall, this was one of our determinations within our 1/12s, to eliminate a vacant position, work, and then work collaboratively with our union to make sure that we could create that combined position with the assistant special education director. We have engaged in those conversations, have completed those conversations, and the belief is that that can be accomplished, so that's a, that's an agreement with the LSAA.
All right, I just want to make sure, because I have experience in this, and I know that assistant sped directors feel like they're very busy, and the evaluation team chair person, I would assume that's very demanding, too, so. And with COVID, it's not very easy right now, so we're getting all these IEP meetings in?
Yes, if you recall, this assistant special education director position was one of the positions that we were going to reduce. The position would have moved into the evaluation team chair, so ultimately, what we did is reduce the evaluation team chair. The individual stayed in the current position and absorbed some of the responsibilities of the evaluation team chair within the current position. So, you get an evaluation team chair plus, essentially should be the way you can, you can view it, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Sure, Ms. Darni, and then Ms. Martin.
Actually, I do have questions about this page, so I guess it would be okay to go into it. So, I'm not aware of this position, strategic advisor. I don't recall ever having a position like that. Maybe you could explain that to me?
Sure, that was the position that was approved last year to get our, to move through our strategic plan. So, there's, if you remember, Mr. Murphy, who shared with you some of our strategic plan.
That was a consultant.
Mr. Murphy was our...
Consultant, right.
Remember that we, we shifted from a consultant to a part-time position? So, that was a position that was approved by the committee previously. Shifting from a consultant to a part-time position, we're eliminating that position. Was anticipated as one year, but to remove it from the books, we're reducing it off the books.
Yeah, because I don't see that as a priority position. Really don't, sorry. And then in terms of the director of secondary education, that is not the number-two position at the high school, because as far as I know, we have not replaced that number two. What is the title of the number-two position at the high school?
I believe it was the director of curriculum and instruction.
I really think we need that position back at the high school. We need somebody doing that in order for the new head of schools to be successful. I would really be concerned about that. Okay, so that's not that position. And in terms of the labor attorney position, it was my understanding when Mr. Hall took over as chief, that he would continue to do the labor attorney work.
He's, he's been operating functionally there. It has not been a negotiated extension to his contract, but he has been operating functionally within that role, which gives us confidence to reduce it. If this decision is made, we would have to engage Dr. Hall on, in further negotiation to solidify it within his job description.
That wasn't my understanding when we moved him into that position. I thought that that was going to be part of his duties in the chief role.
He has been operating functionally, but it wasn't part of the job description, because we posted it out and Dr. Hall was hired in, gave us some synergy by hiring him. He has been operating functionally, but we never updated the job description. We would have to do that as a committee. It would come through to the committee for approval to formally update the job description.
And then my last question on this page, sorry. Regarding the clerks, I want to know, I understand there's been a huge lag time in terms of questions from the community, but I thought that was really regarding the family resource center and the huge number of parents reaching out, not getting answers, emailing, calling. I don't see these positions as helping with that, so I'm not clear what lag time you're addressing here.
It's, it's across the organization. I think the direct contact for our parents typically is the family resource center, which is where they experience the lag time. The more availability we have to provide answers and responses, the more response, the shorter the response time to families. The other area that we are continuing to evaluate and assess is our current grants. We are expecting to bring back to the committee within our, our grants, our title grants, an addition, a request for an addition of a parent liaison, a bilingual parent liaison that can further support that need, because what is happening is the demand for response exceeds the available time of staff. We need a long-term solution to that, which Ms. Phillips is evaluating, but here, within one year, making sure that we get the position staffed, a reduction on top of the lag time is just not what we're advising. The calls that come into Ms. Desmond's office, they come directly from schools, so you would feel the, you would experience that lag time then from schools. Ms. Phillips' office supervises and oversees the family resource center, so any type of lag can further be supported through Ms. Phillips' office, which was an additional reduction here that we're advising to and recommending to, to restore. But again, they are vacancies, so these are, again, guidance from the committee. This is our recommendation.
Just for clarification purposes, so are you saying that by increasing these clerical roles, that would help the lag time at the family resource center and the lag time? Well, obviously, if this person directly refers to curriculum and instruction, that would help with the school turnaround time, but are you saying that the...
It would help. I don't want to give a false promise here, though. There's additional work that we've got to do. Now, getting our, our parents connected with teachers, getting our families connected to schools has significantly assisted, but one person's not going to solve the lag time. It will support it. It'll, it'll help with it. But we've got some additional work that we've got to do, if this is the environment we're going to continue to go forward with, systemically to resolve it. That was some of the work I was suggesting, trying to work across with our banks that experienced that. They, they adopted new phone systems, is what I hear. You might experience this. You're, you're in the queue, somebody will, your anticipated wait time is, that then is able to track it. Some of you may have experienced this with your calls out to the private sector. That's some of what Ms. Phillips is also evaluating. So, it, I don't want to suggest it's going to solve it, but it will certainly support improvement, which we know needs, needs to happen.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Martin?
And I think to that point, someone actually answering phones would support it also, so I understand the point you're trying to make, but additional staff that can actually do the work is also very helpful. My question actually was regarding the, the combined special ed director and ETC position. We haven't had kind of regular meetings of the special ed subcommittee. I believe Mr. Houghey chairs that, but I do think that an important tracking point to the mayor's concern, you know, we are legally obligated, you know, at 30 days, something needs to happen. At 60 days, something needs to happen. I do think that there's a way to qualitatively measure if combining these positions, and more importantly, it's, I'm not even as concerned about combining the positions as I am about the work that needs to happen in this COVID environment, because I think that's the biggest challenge to implementing a rigorous special education review and, and, you know, implementation process for every student that requires it. So, I would like to say as we move forward, that it should be one of the metrics that we're tracking over time. We used to get that report of, you know, it was a while ago, but that would show, you know, how many times we didn't hit the mark, how many times, you know, so we could track performance with a, a solid, concrete measure. And I think having, you know, you know, and as we go through to approve this, this new structure with those two positions combined, I think it places greater emphasis on our need to ensure that we're tracking that over time. That's a comment.
Ms. Desmond, can you take that, can you just take that note and... Ms. Desmond, can you take that, can you just take that note and refer back to whatever the historic projections were, if we can resurface that for the committee?
Sure, Mr. Dakota?
Thank you. Can I make a motion that that subcommittee try, pursue, setting up a meeting for the special ed?
Sure, second in buying, Ms. Darney.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, why don't we open up the budget hearing? So we'll open up the budget session for all those in favor. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? That portion is closed. We'll open up to anybody opposed? That portion is closed. So, what is the wish of the body? I think we should go through it, but Ms. Martin?
Yes, so we're, as we enter into the, the public hearing portion of this, I do think the, the first thing we need to address is the missing suspense account, which was an action the committee had taken at our, the June meeting. So that is not represented here in the, in the budget that we were provided with today. So I think we need to, the, the body needs to make a decision about, before we even begin, how we wanna proceed where that was not incorporated into this new budget.
If I, if I could, there was, this is an area of guidance that we need to receive. So that suspense account was created, and then we had further guidance from the committee. One of those was a contract within our office that would fund, within, that's coded to my office, but would fund and further fund the cultural proficiency training, which was a subsequent motion by the committee to have that training occur, that to include the members of the body within that training. The second, so looking at and evaluating and assessing these contracts, absent that funding there, there's a concern or a question. The second was, it, the, I believe the request of the body at that point was a certain dollar amount that would, was related to the salaries of the executive cabinet. Within the subsequent 1/12 budgets, all of those positions were included within. So we did, what we did here is we created these recommended positions that ultimately accounted for additional dollars at the committee's discretion. If ultimately, we don't wanna recommend those position, that still gives you the dollar flexibility. The second is, in subsequent meetings of the 1/12, I believe we've resolved as well the committee's desire for use of that suspense account, which was the add-back or replenish of certain positions that were within the budget. We've already added those back. So that was the desire there, not to deviate from the guidance of the committee. So I apologize if it was perceived that way.
Ms. Clark, are you, done?
I just wanna say, I, I do believe that the, the committee will need to take action before we begin this process. So whether it's to agree that the, the dollar amount that was put into the suspense account is something that we're willing to now, you know, look at as part of the whole and, and start from scratch. I'd need to know the total. I don't know what the total was, was two?
I think it was 209,000 or something like that.
Okay.
Oh, 284, so 290, closer to 290.
Okay. Ms. Clark?
So I would make a motion to approve the budget as written. I think that it's responsive to our requests. I think it lines up with what we've asked. I think restoring some of the positions that were originally taken off make good sense with the city money reducing it almost 4%. I mean, that would have covered a majority of the positions even that we're reducing here, and, and certainly where they were closer to 1.2 million in the estimated budget, that would cover all of these positions. So we potentially wouldn't have needed any cuts, but it is what it is, and I understand, you know, based on our conversation at our last meeting, why those items, you know, adjustments needed to be made. But it does seem to me that these are reasonable positions with the, those recommended restoration. So I would make that motion.
Second. Second. Okay. Any, sure, Ms. Darney?
I, I wonder if we could get the number breakdowns on some of the positions that we're talking about, like, what would the cost of the facility area manager, the two clerks?
77. I did the math over here, so the two clerks are 100,000, the facility area manager is 77,000, and the academic coach looks like it's 90,000.
But the academic coach could come off the grant, so it's not?
Come off the grant, and if you recall, we already restored the district support specialist during one of our 1/12 conversations. So both, the district support specialist was already restored during one of the 1/12, so that's already embedded within as well as part of this ongoing budget. That position is filled, which is why you're seeing it different here.
So that, those recommended to restore, the one that's already been funded for 3/12, so whatever amount of the budget we've gone through, that totally takes care of the whole 284,000 that was in suspense?
The additional, the additional that the committee asked to restore was the bilingual liaison, which was restored through the grant as well. If you recall, that previous conversation included a district support specialist and a bilingual liaison. I think some of the challenge with the guidance we received was to create an expense account, but not to create, not to restore those positions, which were competing requests of the committee. We were able to meet those restoring without the expense account, and now you also have these additional positions. So all combined, you exceed the expense account with the bilingual liaison, the district support specialist, and all of these positions. These just remain vacant, which is why we have them on a recommendation to restore now, whereas the others came to you on the previous 1/12s. So we can add all of those up too. You're gonna exceed that number. Ms. Phillips, or Ms. Turner, can you add those positions up as well and give the committee a total number?
Which, which positions?
The district support specialist, the bilingual liaison, as well as the facilities area manager and two clerks.
Does Clark, we, we have a contract for the?
It's over 300,000. Thanks. 332,000.
And if you recall, we restored those previously within the 1/12s, and they are filled positions, hence the reason we're not showing them again here.
Sure, Ms. Martin?
So to Ms. Clark and Ms. Howie, Mr. Howie's motion, so are we taking this as a whole? You wanna ask all our questions now? Is that amenable?
I guess that's what, yeah.
If that's how you choose to do it, I mean, it's, again, it's not a public hearing, but process, but that's fine. I can ask my questions à la carte. I just wanna make sure that's your intention. I can't hear you, way down here.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. So then, if that, the motion and a second, and now we can ask our questions specific to the, to the budget?
Yep.
Okay.
Wanna start?
I have a first, yeah, first kind of round of them. So, looking, we have discussed the, the changes with the special education. Looking at the, we're looking at an addition now of the data analyst position? I'm assuming that's grant-funded? It's looking here like it's a $50,000 position that's grant-funded? Sorry, that's on page, I'll bounce around. So it's page three?
That was a position that we added last year, if you remember, as part of our budget adjustment. That's a filled position that's our, that was added last year as part of our budget adjustment. That's a carryover position. Ms. Turner, the funding line for that?
I'm just wondering what the grant source is.
Funding line is?
Are you, are you referring to page three, the second to last line?
Yes, I am.
That's actually not the one that we added. So this one's been there, it's, it's a data analyst position that assists with the early childhood office. So it was there last year, and it is grant-funded.
Thank you.
So that's one by the early childhood grant?
Yes.
Okay. Is that a full-time position?
Yes.
Okay. Looks like it could be a deal. I'm sorry, I just have to kinda go through my, my notes. We've zeroed out the principal merit increases, is that accurate? They're still showing in the general fund? I'm sorry, page six?
Principal merit increases. No, actually, the principal merit increases is still under the general fund, $17,000.
Do, yeah, so do we, are we still contractually obligated with those? My thought is that they had cycled?
Ms. Martin, there's one more cycle of principals that still have that in their contract. However, the contract, the merit is based off MCAS scores, so that has to be readdressed for obvious reasons, because the tests didn't occur.
So it has to be, the testing isn't being, isn't gonna happen now? We've, right? So is that, I'm sorry?
Correct. So the tests didn't occur in about eight principal contracts. There's four indicators from the MCAS scores that are used to compute the amount of the merit increase. However, that contract provision either has to be renegotiated or a decision has to be made, how that's gonna be addressed, because the contract provision failed.
So basically, we can't, you know, keeping the 17,000 in there doesn't really make sense at this point? Because there's no way for them to earn it?
It may replenish back. I don't know that we want to non-appropriate for it until we make those determinations, just contractually, but functionally.
The next page was on page seven, looking at the, the cadre of teachers primarily. So as I'm looking at the numbers, there's an addition of the 29, and this is, you know, overall, additional 29 teachers. Does that represent the additional 20 or 30 positions that we needed to hire to accommodate the remote versus in-person?
No.
Okay, so those, okay, so you can explain, I'm sorry.
So during, through the Fair Student Funding process, when teachers were added, like, there were a lot of ELL teachers added for compliance reasons, so the 29 includes all of those type of teachers. The green highlighted area, the 2.4 million dollars that you see there, that would represent any of those additional teachers that were discussed for COVID-related, you know, we're calling them credit recovery teachers, but they're COVID teachers, teachers that are hired just for this timeframe.
So how many does that represent?
The 2.4 million includes 1.8 million dollars for teachers, for 30, and then 540,000 for paradifferentials.
So as we look at these numbers, if we recognize that, I mean, we all know that we're on shifting sands and things could change anytime now. One of the things I'm particularly concerned about is that, as we are hovering near the red zone right now, what's, what are we gonna be looking at if, say, a month from now, we've had continuous, you know, we've been in the red for the, the three consecutive weeks, it's not attributable to one specific cluster outbreak, we're faced with having to decide whether we go full remote or, or still try to maintain, so taking into account all those At that point, what do we do with those 30 additional teachers?
I think instructionally, based on our current plan, we wanna keep relationships consistent between teacher and student, between teacher and school, so keeping classes consistent would be our, our path forward. If the district, if the committee wanted to make a different decision in terms of its staffing, Dr. Hall, what flexibility would the committee have?
At this point, with the, with the credit recovery teachers, in order to get certain candidates, we did suggest to them there would be more than a month or two of employment, so that they, if we shut down, for example, they'd be spread out amongst the classes or keep their current students. But go remote, we would be able to look at different classifications of employees for layoffs, depending upon the situation. I don't know if you want me to go through those one by one, or?
I just think it's important for us to anticipate it, because, you know, if we do find ourselves in that situation, we're gonna have unemployment costs. I'm assuming most of these teachers have worked within the last year, so it's not gonna be a matter of them just getting charged off at the two or three months that they worked for us. We'd have to pay their full, the full 12 months benefit.
Yeah, I think that our strategic recommendation would be to keep teacher-student relationships consistent, that we keep our classes and our rosters consistent. If there's a, you do bring up an important point, Ms. Martin, if, for instance, the governor were to declare another state of emergency and shut us down for the remainder of the year, or if you're to hit another circumstance of economic cliff, we have other savings that would come about for the district. I think the continuity and the relationships of our teachers and our students is gonna also be a conversation that we have to take up when we talk about our return to school and students that are currently in remote environments and our class sizes. So our recommendation will be to keep our rosters, our classes, and our teacher-student relationships consistent. What Dr. Hall is suggesting is, if the committee wanted to go in a direction different than or contrary to our recommendation, there are other flexibilities he could provide the committee with.
My next question is on page 11, guidance, counseling, and testing. So looking at the difference in personnel, I know that there are some changes here, where you broke out some of the sped social workers and broke that into two different lines. But I'm just curious where the, where the big increase came from, going from 76 to 84? Is that a differential between the, the general fund and the offsets that we're paying for more of them in the general fund?
I'm sorry, I don't understand 76 and 84.
So as I'm looking at page 11, the FY '20 total personnel was 76 FTEs for the general fund and was eight, now is 84? And is that made up by this 14, this shift from 11 to 3 in offsets?
So that's actually a combination of the social workers going on the local budget, and it's also the 20, we went up one guidance counselor, the career counselor, so this is a total for the page, but the social workers, there were 42, and there are still 42, it's just we've moved them around from grants to the local budget.
Okay, that was, that was my question. The, we've already discussed the district supports, so that's, we've, that's just been maintained now at the three, and then we added, your recommendation is to add another one, is that? No, I'm sorry, not district support, the bilingual family liaisons. So we're adding, we're at six, and that's all being paid for by the, one of the title grants?
Yes, we actually had five. We're recommending to add one, as the superintendent was discussing, for the family resource center, and it would be funded by the grants.
Okay. Would that person be located in the family resource center, actually responding to parents?
Our expectation and our plan is we have many of our liaisons working on outreach, there's also a need to work on intake, so that would be the expectation.
Okay. And the part-time ones are our school site-based, the part-time parent liaisons, part-time or stipend?
Yes, the parent liaisons were part of the Fair Student Funding process. They would, many of the schools elected to hire, spend less on supplies and hire more of the part-time parent liaisons.
Okay. And then on page 13, the, this general fund charge for the after-school bus drop-off, is that a personnel charge?
It's not a personnel charge. It's a stipend for a couple of staff members to stay after school for when students are not taken off the bus?
It is a personnel. It's, I didn't know if it was rent for a place that we were?
Oh, okay. I thought you meant if it's for one person.
That's fine. So it's a stipend. Okay, those are all my notes. So just an overall comment, just so I can wrap up, and you don't have to listen to me anymore. I just want us to be clear as we're going through this budget, that, and I appreciate all the work that's gone into it, I appreciate that we've redone it 22 times. So, I mean, nothing but fun for you and for us, you know, absolutely. But I think the reality, and I have discussed this with the superintendent earlier, the reality that I think we all need to be prepared for is that if there was ever a year when 9C cuts are gonna come, it's gonna be this year. I think that, looking at the, the tax revenue at the state level, looking at the complete and kind of total inertia at the federal level, I do think that we're going to find that particularly for, at the, you know, from the legislature, given the enormous outlays of funds that are going out to other competing interests, all of which are equally important, you know, keeping roofs over people's heads and feeding people and all these other incredible demands that are being placed on the, the state budget. and all these other incredible demands that are being placed on the state budget just to survive this, the situation we're in. I do think that we should be anticipating that nine-C cuts are going to be part of our reality. I think it's going to be part of our reality here on the school side, and it's certainly going to be part of the reality on the city council side as well. So as we go through this process, I do think it's important to note that anything we don't cut now, we're going to cut later. And that there are going to be certainly things that we're going to have to revisit. And if it's, any empty position that we're choosing to refill, I'm not going to be able to vote for that. I just don't think it's appropriate, recognizing that we're going to need some ban, we're going to need some leeway to kind of anticipate what's going to happen in the next, you know, next quarter. Certainly, I think in January, there's going to be a redistribution. And I just think bringing, bringing staff on now to new positions when we really have to be able to anticipate that those positions are going to end, then we lose the resource and we lose the, we lose additional funds to unemployment costs. So that may not necessarily be teachers, but for any of the new positions that we're, we're talking about adding in tonight, I wouldn't be able to support those. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question on the teachers that have been hired. Are they affiliated or non-affiliated?
They would be affiliated, Mr. Dakota.
Thank you.
Any questions? Ms. Darney?
I'd like to just make a comment that I think that it's been a very difficult start. I don't have to tell you guys, I feel that way, and I don't think you would disagree. It's been a number of challenges. And I tend to be a little bit more optimistic in general that things are going to get better. We came off of, as you know, we were expecting to get one-point-two million more from the city. We were expecting to get, what, close to twelve million more from the state because it was over twenty-five years since there was any money for Chapter Seventy. And there was clearly an understanding that we did not have the resources to do the job. So I'm hopeful, I know that we've all suffered a great economic impact from this pandemic, and it's not over yet. I guess while I would be willing to support the new positions, I want to go back to something my colleague on the right mentioned about having that special education meeting, and as Ms. Martin mentioned, about accountability measures that we're looking at, are we delivering the services that we are obligated by law to deliver? So I'd be looking for some, you know, moving forward that we're doing it better, that we're responding to parents quicker, that schools are getting the information they need when they need it, that our special education students are getting their needs met in the timelines required by the government. So I'm looking for more of that, those metrics and that understanding that we are moving forward. But I will tonight support these additions.
Thank you, Committee Member Doherty. If you, just to remind the committee, and the finance committee chair and I spoke previously about her request for the key performance indicators, we'll be bringing back to you a draft of those KPIs for our next meeting to get feedback and discussion from the committee on whether those are the KPIs you want us, you want us to track as part of year one of the strategic plan, which again is adjusted for COVID. We'll bring that draft back to you on, I believe, Ms. Sheehan, that's October seventh? We're planning to bring back that draft for discussion as part of the reports of the superintendent on October seventh, if that's amenable to the committee.
You all set? Okay. There's no objections. I have a few questions. I'll do it from up here. So while I'm organizing my thoughts, one question was the facilities area manager. So to you, to the superintendent, why wouldn't we hire more custodians and why wouldn't we bring back another superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was a position that we had, which was being leveraged and which was found to be highly supportive by schools. When the individual left the position as part of our cost savings and reductions, we reduced the position as a vacant position. So we're recommending to restore it because what we've seen and what you've experienced with Mr. Underwood and Mr. St. Seer, who have picked up the additional duties of this vacancy within the added needs of facility readiness, we're recommending that bringing that position back will be a greater benefit than simply adding one, two, or even three custodians. We have twenty-eight facilities. So this manager actually oversees half of our buildings, half of our custodians in support of Mr. Underwood. Dr. Hall supports this office, supervises this office, so if you need greater specificity, I'll defer to Dr. Hall.
Well, that's all right, but I just don't know why we need another manager when we need more people on the ground cleaning, sweeping, disinfecting, and things like that.
We believe that this position can create greater efficiency out of the individuals that we currently have staffed. We feel really strongly about our custodial staff. There's approximately ninety? Ninety-four custodians district-wide, ninety-four custodians reporting up to one facilities area manager and a facilities director is a span of control that historically hasn't worked well for the district, which was why we went in this adjustment at the beginning of last year. This was simply attempting to take advantage of the cost efficiencies from a vacant position that we've learned through the opening might not be as recommended as filling the position. So it amounts to, I believe, the cost of three custodians. Is that approximate? Dr. Hall?
Two, yeah.
Two positions cost? So we'll get more effectiveness out of this one position than those two is the, is the analysis here.
Do the principals have any say over the custodians in their buildings?
Dr. Hall, if you could?
The principals would have direct control over all personnel in their buildings and would have the ability to discipline them and counsel them, I think, is what you may be interested in, Mayor.
I just don't see the, I don't see that. Okay. So through you to Ms. Turner, on some of these, so page six, student service specialist freshman academy, what is that? We're going from one to two?
That was part of the Fair Student Funding process when Lowell High, when we did the Fair Student Funding process and Lowell High was given more money due to, you know, due to equity. They chose to do a student service specialist in the freshman academy. They needed to.
Okay. And then under that, alternative school principals, why there are a lot of deductions for the Cardinal, the Laurel Le, the day school, the career academy, the bridge program? Why they cut?
So, as you know, last year was my first budget, and we were, it was chaotic. So I used the existing budget to determine the amounts for this year. Once I had more time this year, I actually used Munis, the accounting system, to go line by line and make sure that we have actual salaries in here. So the actual salaries were less.
Did we overpay them last year?
No, we didn't overpay them. Munis is the accurate thing. The budget had too much in it.
Okay, so it's just a budget detail?
Yeah.
All right. So same thing for page seven, for hearing impaired teachers?
Well, the hearing impaired teachers, if a teacher left and they were replaced with a younger teacher, it would be a salary differential.
Okay. Page eight, we have full funding for substitute teachers, day-to-day and long-term?
Yes, and this would be one of the areas, you know, when Ms. Martin was discussing the, you know, the risk that we face that we may potentially have cuts mid-year. My concern is that I'm doing a balance and act between those concerns and the concern that we may have a lot of savings. And if we have savings, we have unspent money that we're not using. Substitutes is one of those lines. We may have, we may use it. We may end up having substitutes still for the remote teachers and all of that. So we believe in fully funding it, but we do know that that's one area that we may have savings.
Okay. And then, could you explain the paraprofessionals for the special ed again? Is that under some grant, or we went from two-twenty-three to one-ninety-five?
Yes. So we increased the amount on the grant because we took social workers and sped teachers that are MTRS-funded. We took those off of the grants and put the special ed paras onto the grant. So that's why you see a reduction on the local side.
Do we have an increase or the same amount?
No, you, you see an increase from thirty-six to forty-eight.
Okay.
On the grant side.
Okay. All right.
But just to point out, just to be totally transparent, there was a decrease of sixteen special ed paraprofessionals. But under paraprofessionals, you do have the one-to-one paras. So if a student graduates and we no longer need them, we would automatically reduce the special ed paras. But underneath, you would see an increase of fifteen paras, so it could have been coding errors.
Okay. Page ten, TV studio supplies and equipment, there's no funding for that?
No, that was cut a year or two ago in peg funding.
Yeah.
For the city. They do, they do fund seventy-five thousand dollars for some, you know, there is a budget in place with the TV studio, and it's through the peg funding. So it's not through us. So we don't have?
And we're paying all the administration through that too, right?
No, we actually have?
It's not in the budget, right?
We actually have a TV studio, a teacher, like a teacher and a?
Right, but it's not in the budget.
And here it is.
And that's what page is that?
Under teachers, I believe. Yes. On page seven, we have a video production teacher at Lowell High School, and it, and I put that under peg funding too.
Right, that's what I just said. It's not in our budget.
Yes, yes, it's in our, it's listed in our budget, but it's on the grant side, so you're right. And the other one is the digital media producer.
I just don't want this TV studio, so I'll make this comment to the superintendent, to end up like the pool. Because all of a sudden, a year or two ago, we realized we weren't maintaining the pool, and we closed it down. So this TV studio means a lot.
It does.
It better be funded. You know, we, we need to fund this properly. We need to keep it up. It's a big part of the high school, and if, you know, it'd be a shame if it happened to end up like the pool. If the pool was, I don't know, what happened to that, but that just was a shame that all of a sudden it closed down because it wasn't maintained.
We're in, we're in full agreement, Mr. Mayor. This is some of the analysis that we're undergoing with our new head of school. Matter of fact, I was just at the school and just happened to step into his office, and he was in the midst of a meeting talking about the TV studio. Some of what we have to look at is, is the analysis of the need there and the funding of the studio. We had intended in better budget times to be looking at that more aggressively. It is definitely not off of the radar. We're on top of it. You're not the first mayor to bring it to my attention, Mr. Mayor. So we know this is a desire of the city, and we also know it's in the best interest of our children. Our new head of school is in the conversation, and now that we have a new head of school in place, I think you should expect coming forward into next year, as we look at how that budget looks going into next year, this will be part of the conversation continuously.
Okay, thank you. There's a couple more questions. Transportation manager on thirteen, page thirteen? Just, there's a little bit of a decrease. Was that another thing that was not coded?
Right, that was a matter of Munis had an actual salary of a hundred thousand eight twenty-four.
And then page fourteen, administrator of athletics. So, Mr. Superintendent, why were we not able to make that a full-time position and then do the, his other du, that person's other duties are for phys ed department, maybe? I thought it was the direction of the committee to maybe take a look at that and try to separate that?
Yeah, we're, it's also one, in addition to the arts position, that as we start, as we move through COVID and come back and return, it's definitely something under analysis. The athletics and the arts, if you recall, we were anticipating with the Student Opportunity Act to increase those budgets for both the arts and athletics. Without the Student Opportunity Act and going into the uncertainties of this year, it, it's more advisable, we believe, going into the following fiscal year that we revisit that and move in a more sustainable way. It's, we're trying to create as much stability as we can, given the instability that's established for us. I guess it's the quickest answer, but, Mr. Mayor, definitely that's the desire of this administration as well, to expand out athletics and the arts. But in these uncertain times, we didn't believe it to be the right year to go in that direction.
I just don't see how anybody does that position the way it's split up, so. Okay, and then, so the other thing was the two clerks, adding the two clerks on, Ms. Turner, for central office? So why weren't those, Mr. Superintendent, why weren't those positions filled? Like, how are you administrated without an executive secretary?
Yeah, so the, these were, again, positions that were vacant. In many offices and workplaces, executives now support their own, their own scheduling, their own work. That was the intent with Ms. Desmond and Ms. Phillips' offices. We can see, and what we've learned and reflecting on that recommendation, is that it creates other bottlenecks that can't be supported. So this was taking advantage of vacancies to create the cost savings. These are both positions that were vacant, which is why we recommended it for reduction previously. We looked through all of our vacancies to recommend reductions in vacancies to avoid layoffs of people that were in positions. That's the short answer, short answer to it. Reflecting on it now, we believe it's advisable to restore them and hire positions in, hire people in. It'll be new, they're new, they're new people, restored positions.
Okay. All right, I guess that's all the questions I have. I just, I mean, I think, I thought in this budget, we were really going to take care of that athletic director and the phys ed. What would you call the other part, phys ed?
Academic chair of physical education.
There's, Mr. Mayor, we are planning to give a full athletic update to the committee as part of, again, as part of our October seventh report. So you will be able to hear from the athletic director, and he'll be able to share out with you how he's managing athletics going forward. But as you may recall, athletics are part of the uncertainty that we're managing as well. So we are managing those going forward. We have a commitment as a district that any athletics that are offered as part of MIAA, we are going to offer here locally. However, that's also part of the season-by-season decisions. We know what the fall decision was. I will tell you, it's quite disheartening to me, Mr. Mayor, to know that wrestling is a big question mark for the winter. It's not only wrestling, though. It's, every sport goes through an analysis of whether it can operate, given the COVID restrictions. You may, you know, football and competitive cheerleading was moved to another, another semi-winter season, I guess this would be the best way to call it. But the athletic director will provide for you an update. There's a lot of shifts in athletics this year as it relates to COVID-19 requirements. So it is something that's definitely within our strategic plan to continue to look at athletics and the arts. And going into next fiscal year, we're going to, we have a commitment to reflect back on those, the SOA commitments that we had in, was that March?
Yes.
Ms. Turner, was that the first SOA budget that we shared?
We had the first budget in January, and then?
January with the thirteen million addition, and I think that's what you're reflecting on, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I mean, I know the position. I just know that it's, it's an impossible task to do. And I thought we were going to take care of that, but, all right, I don't have any further questions. Mr., Ms. Darney?
Yes, I wanted to ask a couple, first of all, I was thinking about the facilities area manager position during the mayor's questions that if we go full remote, are custodians even going to be working? Because the buildings will not be utilized. I mean, right now, they're being utilized at twenty-five percent of the students. So I'm starting to rethink that position in terms of putting in a position that we could literally, in a month, be fully remote for the rest of the year. Like, maybe the time, and I get the superintendent's point about the athletic director position because it's a similar kind of thing. Athletics, physical ed, are the kids, are the twenty-five percent in school having phys ed? And so, you don't have to answer that. But, so I'm thinking about some of these moves and what really is our priority now. You guys may remember, I wasn't at last Wednesday's meeting because we couldn't switch to another night because we couldn't get the council chambers. We used to have opportunities to broadcast our meetings at a number of locations. We could do it at the STEM, we could do it at the TV studio. I mean, that, to me, seems like a more pressing, that and that director of curriculum position at the high school that I think we desperately need over there than some of these other roles. And another position that jumped out on page eleven? And another position that jumped out on page eleven, the.
Can I make a suggestion?
Can I just talk about this last position that I?
Yeah, go ahead.
The school climate specialist. Why, what is that person doing in schools that are at twenty-five percent capacity right now and could very well be fully remote? But I'll take your position, your recommendation.
I don't, Mr. Mayor, I don't, committee member, was that a?
Yeah.
A question for response, or do you want me to hold?
Do you have a question?
I, I'm just wondering about some of these positions. I'm, I'm rethinking, I think that in terms of the recommendations, we should do it position by position.
Well, that was going to be my suggestion, if we took a vote on Ms. Clark's motion, which is on the floor.
Which is to take it all at, at once, everything.
If fails, we can go into the budget and make some changes that we feel are priority. Like, the high school needs that curriculum person, I don't know why we didn't fill that back yet. People are not succeeding without that position.
So if I could, that.
Setting them up for failure.
The high school had eight hundred thousand dollars additionally provided to it as part of its school site budget. The climate specialist is a key, key component of our cultural proficiency work going forward, it provides all of our student engagement work. They've, he's in the process right now of activating our district student advisory council and working across to leverage student voices. If you recall, you may have met the individual who's in that role, who did a lot of our organization of our students, who were engaging in the race-based protests earlier in the summer, that worked direct interaction with students and leveraging student voice as part of our school climate. That's what that role has been working on, school climate and student engagement across our Renaissance Network. It's been an extremely important role to make sure that we can engage our students differently than we have previously. The facility area manager is working in a direction that our plan is to increase the number of in-person seats. If the plan was to move more remote, then I think certainly the perspective of the committee is, is, is important there within the conversation of remote versus in-person. But we've got a plan and project going forward, and the plan that we're operating under is the plan that we understood from the committee, which is to increase in-person capacity as the health indicators allow us to do so. And that's the direction that we're talking about here with the facility area manager, to be able to further support the additional facility needs within the district. So the, we're working to make sure we can value the school site council decisions. There is, has, was a significant amount of investment, further investment at the high school. There's a new head of school there who did share with the committee some, his initial assessment, but now he's had additional months. He may have additional or a new, new assessment after he's gone through that experience, but the investment is there for Lowell High School, and a lot of flexibility there with Lowell High School. And then the other two positions are, I believe, explanatory. The athletic position is, is something else that we are working to make sure that we can continue to expand and improve our athletic offerings. This is just a, it's a different climate here with COVID-19 around athletics, and the athletic director will share with you that update on athletics for next week.
All right, and if I may, just, okay, go ahead.
I'm wondering, does anyone know what would the cost be to have a stu, a TV studio, we could, we could have our meetings, so we're not locked into just the city council? What would the cost be? I know, maybe we can't go back to the STEM, but what are we looking at?
I don't know if that cost, that cost out in that analysis was done historically, I'll look to Ms. Desmond, was that cost out done historically, or Ms. Turner? It hasn't been done recently, and we know we need to conduct that analysis. Ms. Desmond?
I, I believe the fifth-floor PD office, the, the PD room is set up to film. We did not have staffing, it was my understanding, to, to do that work, but that is a facility that is available to hold our meetings.
The other with the TV studio, there was a response to Mr. Dakota's motion a few months back that gave the extensive report out from the teacher, Mr. Wilkins, they gave a report out of what the TV studio is doing and kind of the going-forward projection. Obviously, the teacher would be heavily involved in our full analysis and build out of that program.
Are you all set? Ms. Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I do think that, you know, we're obviously talking about a number of different positions with varying degrees of, 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 let's say, support, you know, across the group of us. Is there any, any time that could be saved and perhaps put us all in a, in a better headspace? If we were able to say that these new positions, the, the positions that we've been discussing, if we were to basically say, these are decisions to be made in January, that putting them off, whether it's the, you know, the facility area manager, that could tip one way or the other in the next couple of months, we're going to know then. The, you know, my, I am slow to recommend and to approve any position that is not directly right in front of students right now, because I think that that's the biggest need. So anyone who's not directly interacting with them is, I don't think we can afford the investment in. If we push back these positions and say that they are all to be hired in January, we then buy ourselves a little bit of time, and we're not committing, you know, all of the funds to these positions. And honestly, I don't even know how many of them, you know, as they're represented here, it's their full salaries, a quarter's already gone. So, you know, you, you're only paying for three quarters anyway. If we bring it to a half, that may be more amenable, and we would be at a point in our fiscal year at that point that I think we would be better informed about what we're actually looking at in terms of any changes to state funding or, or anything like that. You know, I offer it as an option.
If I could, I think the two there that I might suggest, the two clerk positions, we're clearly seeing the, the need there to make sure that we're more responsive in terms of phone calls coming in. The two clerk positions, I might suggest that the committee take up differently. We certainly understand the questions around a facilities area manager, if we're not going back in person and we end up being more remote. So I might suggest you look at those differently. The other, the other position, the other positions are within our title grants, which are not, we have not received any message or mention that our, our title grants would be reduced, and we've got to get those applications out. But whatever be the desire of the committee, certainly we'll adjust and, and adapt to that, to that recommendation, that guidance. I just want to make sure that there's awareness around those two clerk positions. They're historic to the district, this is the first year we've gone without those two positions. And that's some of our reflection on, on service levels provided with those two reductions. But again, they are vacancies.
Which positions, again?
Those are the two clerk positions, the executive assistants within the engagement office and the academic office.
I mean, my, my question on that would be, you know, again, specific to the clerks. I, I recognize they were looking at two executive-level clerks to bring back. The reality is, is if we brought three traditional-level clerks and put them in the family information center, you'd get a big, I believe, and, and, you know, I understand that we're asking top-level administrators to, to do more with less. That is why I apologize for that. But it's a familiar song, and I think any kind of, any kind of positions we're bringing back that are not absolutely face-to-face with kids and their families, I, I don't think we can justify it at this point. So if we, you know, again, I'm one vote, so we can, you know, if we want to vote on each position, that's fine. But if we wanted to put everything in in a January timeframe, then I think we'd be better su, we'd be better situated to make these kind of decisions.
Okay. Ms. Clark?
These are all the positions that are being added back in, or they're vacant, right? So they, they need, there's time that it takes to even fill a position. So additional, is that accurate, or no one is currently working in these roles?
The individuals that are working in those roles are, Ms. Phillips and Ms. Desmond are picking up those, those responsibilities in addition to, but no, they're not, the positions were reduced because they were vacant. That was the reason that we put them up on the schedule for reduction. We, our assessment, our analysis is that those reductions and those vacancies are unsustainable to continue to absorb that, that requirement, which has increased due to COVID, so. Yeah, they're historic positions, but they went vacant due to, one's a retirement, that was a recent retiree that's in the curriculum office. The other one was a individual in Ms. Phillips' office selected a position within, that was vacant within Dr. Hall's office. So it was an internal transfer.
And through you, Dr. Hall, can we, how long does it typically take to fill a vacancy? Is it about a month's time?
Probably a month to six weeks.
So we're really pretty close to the end of the year at that, I mean, but it's basically October first, we're talking mid-November for someone to even start in any of these roles. I, I mean, I, I have to respect the, the experience of the team that has worked so hard in front of us to prepare this, to go through and, and come over and really working day in and day out to support our students and our district. I think that these are reasonable asks, and they make sense. While I, I can understand my colleagues saying more people kind of in that frontline area, and certainly, if we had all the money in the world to go around, yes, you know, hire as many clerks as possible, I mean, we, we have needs, we definitely have needs that far exceed the dollars that we have. But I do believe, you know, we're continuing to work, and we're up against some difficult challenges, challenges we're not really sure what, where things are going to go, but the plan is the plan of trying to reopen and bring more, sorry, bringing more people in person. The demands on our team in front of us are not going to decrease by any stretch, if anything, I would think they will probably increase over the next few months. I, I do feel strongly, this, this was not just thrown together, I mean, these are the recommendations, I, I think our team certainly, Ms. Turner has done an amazing job to go through and, and really identify, how can we realize some savings? Where can we, you know, move money around to, to free up dollars to do some other things? I think it's amazing that we, in fact, went forward and funded our, our school-based budgets in full at two million dollars, over two million dollars. I mean, it really speaks to the hard work that's going on, that we're also giving our schools the ability to make some decisions on their own about where they see need. And so I, I do have to trust, I, I mean, I think we all could have ideas about what might work, but the people in front of us are the people who are really doing the work. And I, I believe they are competent and capable, and I want to trust that they are making good decisions on behalf of our students, of our families, of our district. And I think that it might make sense if we kind of identify a priority list, which I, I think we're hearing, I mean, athletics, special education, you know, the curriculum position at the high school are things that we've identified as important values that, you know, things that we're hearing from community members. But I think to try and shake things up, because we think this one position is more important than one of the ones on this particular list at, at this eleventh hour, when we're really looking to, again, move forward, get things going, I just, I, I would struggle to support that, because I think, I think we are identifying the priorities. And I, I do believe this team has been very responsive to what we are saying is important. And while we can't do it all, we're doing the best that we can with the dollars that we have in hopes that we get more dollars. And I understand that, that's an optimistic viewpoint, but even as Ms. Turner has identified, there are, depending on what happens in the next few months, money might be saved, and we might be able to use it elsewhere. So I, I think that, again, I would still reiterate that I would support this budget as delivered, with perhaps the opportunity to, to make kind of some priorities in terms of where we go, if and when we have some additional money to spend. So, thank you.
Mr. Howie?
Yeah, I tend to agree with my colleague on just approving these recommendations tonight, but I do want to make a few points about what the mayor said with the facilities. I believe we have to just be patient with that, I think we have to negotiate with the union. But I do think facilities have to be looked at quite a bit. There's definitely things we can do to improve that, I, in my opinion. Sometimes you have, to me, too many custodians at nighttime, just to give you an example.
We have what?
You might have too many custodians working at nighttime, and a principal might not need that. I'm just, I'm just giving you one example that I feel that we might be able to save some money in facilities, but I think we're going to have to do that through negotiations. I didn't think we were going to go through everything, because if I did, I'm going to bring up what I wanted to say right away, and that's on page two. Something that the facilities meeting we had before, they brought up how much we're paying for our administration. Well, when I look at that page right there and I see what we pay superintendent, which is the same as the city manager, and then we pay our, our Ms. CFO a hundred and sixty-five thousand. And then, then I look at our chief operate, operating officer only making one fifty. And then I look at our chief academic officer making one fifty-nine. Now, in my opinion, and I'm only one person, I believe those two should be getting the same as our CFO. Nothing against Ms. Turner, we gave her that contract, and we paid her that amount. But that's another issue that we've talked about to fix, especially, we already talked about fixing Ms. Desmond's contract, something we didn't do there either. So, I mean, I didn't want to bring that up tonight, but that's another issue we have to fix. And we are waiting for the state to send us some money, and I still believe that the state will come through with some dough. So I, I just think Ms. Clark is right on the money, we should go with the recommendations of the team right now, and that's the way I'd like to go tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess in theory, I, I do agree with Ms. Clark and her comments about, but I think I also agree with Ms. Martin in terms of maybe putting the brakes a little bit on making the decision to make some of those hires. Because things can radically change for us in the next two weeks, next month, and I think, to her point, it could change everything and what our needs are going forward. If the, if the state shuts everybody down again, where does that put us and with those needs? Some of those, some of the other needs will become more heightened, I would guess, than that we would need to address that in that way. But I think we, if we tread slowly here, as opposed to, you know, with an approved budget and put the RFP out there or put a, you know, the want ads out, I think we need to be careful about how fast that goes and see where we are in the next month or so, or even two months, going to the end of this, of the school year. This, this particular year, not, not the school year, but I think we need to tread with caution. Thank you.
And I, I think, again, we, we certainly want, will need to be able to do that with the facilities area manager particularly. I think the ones that are pressing for us right now within these, restoring, the academic coach is going to need to be, that supports our schools, the, that's a grant position though within the title. The two clerks would be positions that, again, historic to the district, that we would be looking to restore immediately. The others we can, but that does take time, it takes time to find people, which is why we'd want to post those so that we can find people. The facilities area manager, we can assess as we see the direction of the COVID data and the direction of in-person versus remote. I think as Ms. Martin mentioned, you know, that's a position that's for, directed at increasing in-person. It's less consequential in a remote setting, and we are seeing where the COVID data is moving.
All right. Yeah, we will, one, one further comment is just that, so I don't, the things I don't understand is I don't know why the executive secretaries weren't filled, I don't know how you run your office without a secretary. And the other thing we observed with this start this year is we do need more people on the front line down the resource center, and we need more cleaning, so I don't know why those wouldn't be priorities. Like, why would you put a chief when we need three more helpers for custodians? And, you know, the clerks, I agree with that, I don't know how they do their job without having someone there to help them. But I think that's where we should be looking, is the front line, you know? People are calling, you can't get in touch with anybody, they've got issues, it takes a week to resolve. And, you know, this is where we should be focusing our, our priorities on right now, so. Mr. Superintendent?
Yeah, thank you. Those are definitely the areas where we were looking to provide support, looking at the list here and the guidance we had from the committee to restore positions that were previously cut before adding new positions. We can certainly design and build out additional positions. We also want to make sure that we're resolving concerns systemically and not just putting individuals after a challenge that was within, certainly a challenge within the month. We're making sure Ms. Phillips does have a call scheduled with our, some of our local private partners who have experienced that same challenge. It, the solution may be more people. The solution may be more people in that family resource center. The solution may be some type of systems upgrade to make sure that we can support it. I just want to have the opportunity, as I think I expressed previously, to make sure that we analyze the situation, bring back to you a solution. As I mentioned to Ms. Doherty, these will help, they're not going to solve. So, and I want to make sure that if I bring back to you a solution, we have confidence in the solution. Again, what we experienced here with the month, I think I tried to describe it this way. The family resource center is designed and structured to support the incoming calls in a traditional environment, which usually are students who are changing schools, kindergartners, students new grade levels, and students who are new to the system. That's a few thousand students. This year, we experienced, everybody was new to the system. So it was 14,000 students, 9,000 families, and that's what led to the delay in calls, which were not in reflection and certainly even at the time. That delay is not something anybody intended, not something that's acceptable in terms of a timeframe, but we're also...
Can I just, so why wouldn't we hire more people? You just told us that there's a delay, yet we don't hire more people.
The question I think we have is, is that delay one month at the beginning of COVID registration?
No, it's going to be a year, that's the whole point.
We're seeing some easing of the calls right now. We also need to make sure, is it two people, is it three people? I've got to go through that analysis with the staff that's there and give you a solution that's going to work, that can be sustained. Here's restoring positions that we know we had, that those bottlenecks are being felt. I have those positions, we have those job descriptions, it's not a realignment of duties, it's something that I can bring to you now and will tell you, this is going to help. It can be, it can fit within our budget. I will likely need to bring back to you, I'll tell you another area that's under analysis. And you have KC here right now, his office is structured to support a few thousand devices. Now we've got 13,000 devices. We've got to analyze that and what that support need is, but we have to go through that analysis and make sure we give you a solution that's going to work. That's all I'm suggesting, Mr. Mayor. I can't give you a number of people now that's going to answer that, nor is just posting it out, training people, getting them supported. I can't commit to you that that's going to resolve it. I do know what the problem is, I got to figure out what a resolution is, what a solution is to bring back to you.
Ms. Martin?
And I think absolutely to your point, Mr. Superintendent, is that there are looming needs. I agree, technology, you know, again, what happens in the next four weeks is going to determine if that's, you know, a catastrophe or an apocalypse. I mean, we're not talking about this being resolved and everything goes back to normal again. So, you know, I just think that in these next six to, you know, six to eight weeks maybe, we could be rebuilding an entire district. We could be absolutely starting from scratch all over again and having to rebuild this. The decisions we make now limit our ability to make decisions later. If we go full remote in six weeks, we're not, if we've already made all these hires, we're not going to have the capacity unless miracle money comes in, which I know people are, some are more optimistic than me, sorry about that. But we're not going to have money to solve those problems. So, if you can envision in six weeks, we have to build a whole new district, suddenly Family Information Center deluged all over again, and we don't have anyone supporting it, any new resources supporting it. You know, nobody's in the schools, but we've committed to a facilities manager who may or may not be necessarily the most important thing come six weeks from now when we're building an entirely new district. You know, so again, to my way, to my thought process, the need to A, focus only on face-to-face, you know, impact for students and families, and B, ensuring that we don't lock ourselves into something, because certainly by the same token, everything goes well and the world is back to normal in February. We need to build a whole new district again. If that happens, if there is this, you know, if there is a vaccine that comes out and works, I mean, again, these are all the big what-ifs. But should that happen, then suddenly, we're spending all of our transportation money. We're spending, you know, we're needing to rebuild an in-person district, and that's true even if we go to 50%. Even if we, you know, which we hope we can do, getting to 75%, which we hope we can do. Each one of those gradations of, or increments of increase is really going to require building a whole new district all over again. And it's going to be all the same pressures because you're going to have all the same families reaching out to those same, you know, for those same resources at the Family Information Center, you know, and again, if we, we may have to rerun a lottery. I mean, what's that look like? You know, so I just think that anything we can do right now that gives us flexibility moving forward, I think we really need to be very, very aware of that because, you know, we've built a budget and it's built on certain assumptions that I think we all need to be able to make, you know, certain risks that we're willing to take, and that's really the process. I mean, a budget is a, is a projective, you know, document, and you need to take your best, you know, make your best estimates. But in this current situation, I think we have to be able to give ourselves some leeway to anticipate that what we're planning for today is very likely not going to be what we end up facing. And the more we lock ourselves in, the less room we have to be accommodating and to make the changes that I truly do believe we're going to have to be called on to make.
And I think, and I think with regard to the facility area manager, our plan was to, was not to move swiftly with that hiring, to make sure we understand the environment clearly and what we're planning for. I do think, Ms. Martin, though, these two clerks, we've had, since those positions left, enough time to analyze it, to understand that regardless of which environment we're in, those are going to be beneficial to the organization and beneficial to the, to whatever bottlenecks are experienced, and which is also why I was very cautious with my answer to Ms. Doherty. These are not solutions to the FRC. They will help. The individuals with phones and on phones will help that, but it'll also help other challenges as well that we're experiencing coming in, particularly the amount, the amount of calls that are coming into the curriculum office, the amount of additional work that these individuals do to alleviate. Ms. Desmond, who is currently acting also as our Director of Technology, supporting KC's office, it frees her up to do some of that. The same thing with our Family Engagement Office. So, I am with you and agree wholeheartedly that flexibility, that's part of our strategic commitment for this year. We've got to maintain that flexibility. At the same time, I am obligated to provide to you best recommendation with best information that I've got. Two clerks that have been historic to the district that are currently vacant right now, in all transparency, is creating some challenges. We're recommending to restore those. I think the facility area manager, we're planning to slow-move that hiring process as-is. If that's something that the committee wants to table to ensure that it's slow-moving, whatever direction the committee wants to go, we can certainly go with that particular position. It's very different, remote versus in-person for that position.
Ms. Doherty, and then Mr. Dillon's on Zoom, he'd like to speak, so, Ms. Doherty?
Thank you. So, I just wanted to say, I think that, you know, we have a motion on the floor, we should, you know, try to get to that. But what I heard the superintendent say that I think is very important is, we don't really know yet what we need for the Family Resource Center. Like, I think part of why, you know, unprecedented times, trying to bring back 25% of the students, a pandemic, everything going on, but I think there were a lot of miscommunication that went out to parents, you know, letters, "Your child got remote," or "Your child got in-person," and it was the opposite or whatnot, and, you know, the lag time in terms of parents not getting responded to. So, I really think that we should, what we have to do tonight is vote on that bottom-line number, right? Because the city council has already approved their budget. If we have positions like the facility area manager one or the executive secretaries, we could hold that in a suspense account until we get more information from you in terms of what is a plan that's going to immediately impact those frontline responses that we needed, that Ms. Martin was talking about. I think that might be a better way than trying to solve it tonight. I mean, I understand executive secretaries for the leadership team, I understand that that is a need, but maybe instead of two, there'd be one that would be shared, and that way, we could put another person at the Family Resource Center. And I'm just throwing that out there. I don't know if that would work. But to just say, we're not going to make those decisions right now, given the concerns around where we're going, to give a little bit more thought into where is the most pressing need. And I do understand my colleague, Ms. Clark's comments about, you know, we have a team of experts here, and I do listen very much and read the reports and do my research. But I also play, we play a very important role as the elected members, that we hear from the constituents, and that constituents includes our families and our staff. And it's a balance, it's a balance. Like, in order for us to do our job, we have to bring that knowledge and that information, that pressure to hold you guys accountable for the people that we are accountable to. And I think that that's an important role that we play, and that's why the budget is so important in what we do. So, and, you know, I would say that we should vote on the motion that's on there. I think a plan forward might be to just hold off what that money is and think about it.
Mr. Dillon?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Please, yeah.
Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, thank you for letting me in, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me all right?
Not really. Hold on a second. Does it get any louder?
I don't know if you could try again, Mr. Dillon, a little louder.
Can you hear me now?
Sort of, go ahead, just speak loud.
All right. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to be here. I do have to commend Ms. Clark for trying to move things forward. We, this is, you know, this is, we had a 112 budget, 112 budget. We've been working on this for a long time. This, I don't know why there's this continued need to pick apart every single piece of stuff that we have been communicating on for months. I think this has turned into a bunch of grandstanding, just like it did the last time, and I believe there's a motion on the floor, so I think we should vote on the motion and move forward in this budget process, because, you know, these are questions that have all, we've thought about for a long time, and so this is completely unnecessary, and I think we need to take the vote and approve this budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Clark?
Thank you. You know, I think the beginning of school is, as the superintendent said, is the busiest time of year for our Family Resource Center. And this year was much different because of the, basically, a change, a new school system, as Ms. Martin has referred to it. If we move to fully remote or we get to increase the in-person capacity, we're not rebuilding our system again. We've built the system and we've made it nimble so that we can move in one direction or another. So, while I appreciate that with any change, there is going to come, maybe there's going to be some increases in communication, I think we've gone through our peak, just like in other years, and in this year, it was far greater than any other year because of all of the questions and basically needing people to elect a brand-new things for each student in the district. We also experienced a handful of glitches in a totally, I think, homegrown system in terms of school assignment. There were a few blips. Was it the majority of people that got bad information? No. We're talking a small number in the grand scheme of communication out to families. And while I appreciate that is some of what we are hearing, and it does exist, and it is important that we figure out what went wrong and how to rectify it, when we're talking percentages, I mean, we're talking maybe 1% of our entire...
Do you know that? I haven't seen a percentage.
Why, no, I'm going to guess, so if 140 people, students, were, received misinformation, that's 1%. I don't know, I don't know what the number is. No, no, I don't know, but I...
All right, we just let it finish and then...
All I'm saying is, we're, we certainly have heard, because of course, it's frustrating for families to receive any information that isn't accurate, but it certainly wasn't 5,000 students that received misinformation. We were talking about a small number of people within our district. It wasn't thousands, we would have heard about that, we would have known because it would have basically created a major, major issue. Not to say it wasn't a major issue, it was for the families that did receive some misinformation somewhere along the line, but it wasn't schools of students that received misinformation. Was it delayed and later than people would have liked? Yes, but we are, that is not the next part of this. The next part of this, I don't know about you, but my email inbox has gotten way down in this week since school has begun. You know what? The sky didn't fall, we're moving forward, people are in school, students are learning. Is it perfect? No. There are parts that are bumpy, but we're not talking about come October, there is going to be another, we're just overhauling everything again. No, we're going one direction or another, and we've planned for that. We've done a lot of work to get to this point. So while I can appreciate the concern that my colleagues are raising, and I hear the superintendent saying perhaps the facility area manager is one that we take off the table or pause on, but I do believe and support that our administration needs support, and that will in fact help to alleviate some needs that are trickled down into our front lines. I have to believe that because I understand that that's, that is how it works. We've got people that are working 25 hours a day, right? And that will and does create burnout. And I think that, I think that it's important to support them in the ways that we can. I think it was correct at the time to suggest that these positions eliminate because they were vacant, but I think it's important that we restore them. And, yes, so I think, I just want to say again that I support the positions that are recommended for restoration. I can, you know, modify my motion to make some adjustment to the facility area manager if, in fact, you know, that would be more amenable to my colleagues to support, you know, moving this motion forward. So I would be willing to take that one off or put a pause on it, I'm not really sure how I should word it exactly, but if there's any recommendation...
Yeah, I think we just have to vote the motion up and down. Mr. Howie?
Okay, I just want to touch the facilities issue one more time. It was maybe two budget cycles ago that I didn't even want to hire Mr. Underwood. If you remember back, I wanted to hire two different custodians, one on days and one on nights and save $50,000. But now that this pandemic came around and the way facilities, issues that we have on both sides of government, I think this recommendation of getting facility leaders is a good idea. We're changing totally the way we're cleaning our schools, we're going to have to really stay up on it more than we ever have before. I always had an issue on how many custodians didn't live in Lowell, still a big issue with me. But now look at, I don't even, I didn't even want to hire Mr. Underwood, and I'm ready to add 249,000 to have Mr. Underwood and two underlings of his to make sure they're doing a great job. And I think the mayor brought up a big issue with facilities, and I think in the future, we're going to be talking a lot more about facilities. And the AD job, no doubt, Mayor, you're right on the money with that also. I already feel comfortable with it because we had so many other things in our way that it is a big issue. One person can't do that job, there's just no way. And I think Ms. Desmond and the superintendent have already done a lot of work toward that, and I think you're going to see that as time comes. But the facility job right now, I think it's as important as maintenance of our buildings on the other side of the city, and that's why I wanted to support this recommendation. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Sure.
Sorry, one other thing that I meant to mention is that there are other items within this budget that may go away if we're in a completely remote. I mean, I noticed, you know, we have certain money set aside for field trips. I don't know if we're paying money for remote field trips or if that's part of the, you know, plan for this year, but, I mean, there, I think there are things in here that really the, that money, while I understand there might be more money spent in one direction, we've really prepared for remote learning as needed, as we know from last week, you know, the shift to remote for a majority of our in-person learners even. We've prepared a budget that supports that type of learning environment if we need to go there. And I think there could potentially be other savings realized elsewhere. I mean, we're really talking about, for these four positions, it's, you know, $267,000... I mean, we're really talking about, for these four positions, it's, you know, $267,000 in a many millions of dollar budget. I, again, I have to say, I support and trust the recommendations that are made by the experts in front of us who have really managed, I think, as well as any other district in the Commonwealth in preparing and getting us to this point. So, thank you.
Mr. Arnie?
Move the question.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
No.
Ms. Martin?
No.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Is, is Mr. Dillon still?
Yes.
Yeah, right, he can vote? He said, yeah, no?
Yes.
He can call, no, we do, we can call him from Zoom.
Yes.
I don't know.
Well, I would say-
Is he staying for the entire meeting?
Yeah, he's staying for the entire meeting. Yeah, but he got here late, so. I would say he's got to be, we have Zoom capability for the meeting, so he's in the meeting. Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
No.
Foyers, three nays approved.
So, that's it, right? Now, we've just adopted?
No, no. Excuse me.
What do you want to do?
I'm accepting that, that motion as the approval of the screen in front of you. Ms. Turner, is that sufficient for what you need to submit over to the city?
Yes, it's 137 million for the October 9th, 12th budget, but it's the 182 million total.
So, the recommendation on the screen is what I'm hearing was voted up, that's what will be submitted across to the city. Thank you, I, I do appreciate it, and the concerns that were raised are, are valid, and we'll make sure that we adjust and maintain flexibility going forward.
Do you think we should do a vote on the final number?
That's what I'm doing now.
We have to do a vote on the final number.
So, right now, we need a motion to vote on the action, this, action necessary because the school committee will be voting on their own bottom-line figure, so I need a motion by Ms. Clark, seconded by Mr. Howie, roll call.
Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yeah.
Ms. Martin? Will you, okay. Okay.
Yeah, all right, we'll, yeah, make mine note, too.
You want to change yours to no? Mr. Dakota?
I think he's giving me-
Mr. Dillon?
I'm a yes.
Yeah, no, I had to-
Okay.
Mr. Dillon?
He said yes.
I can't hear him.
What's the motion? Can I have the motion, please?
To vote the bottom line.
No.
This is the action necessity.
Action necessity. Yeah.
Ms. Doherty?
No.
Foyers, three nays approved. Now, you vote the bottom line.
Now, we vote the bottom line.
It's on the last page.
Motion approved the bottom line for, final bottom-line figure of 182,695,36 by Mr. Dakota, seconded by Mr. Howie. Roll call.
Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
No.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
No.
Foyers, three nays approved.
Motion adjourned by Mr. Howie, seconded by Ms. Doherty. Ms. Doherty?
I'm dying to watch that.